Our first order of business is to open a public hearing. This is to establish the community bridge fund. We also have, we'll just do them one at a time. We will also have a community building fund. But this request came from the council saying that we need to reestablish this fund. The fee would be 2.29 cents per hundred assessed value. That levy would begin in 2023, payable in 2024. So before we make a motion to approve this, if you have any public comment. Okay. Once we've decided this, then it certainly has to, it has to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. But this time, we would need a motion from the commissioners to reestablish or to establish the bridge fund, human bridge fund.
I would make that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, just as well, we have the community building fund. Again, the fee on this would be 2.15 cents per hundred. Again, it would begin the same timeframe, taxes for 2023, payable 2024. Any comments from the community hearing? Okay, we'd need a motion to approve the community building fund.
I'm moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Our second order of business, we have Dr. Allman with us tonight, this morning.
Good morning, thank you. This morning, I just wanted to briefly update you about Senate Bill Four, which is Public Health Bill presented by the Governor Holcomb. It's, as just like in, as you saw in the Journal last week, it's moving forward. My right hand isn't here today, Terry's out with medical league right now. Governor's Public Health Commission published its report in 2022. And in the handout, you see from the U.S. News and World report how Indiana businesses rank nationally were sixth in affordability, or business opportunity were seventh, pretty well. Education, pre-K through 12 were ninth. Growth of the economy in Indiana, according to U.S. News and World report, were 19th. Start to drop off when it comes to public safety, 25th, middle of the state. On the right side, you see, they also surveyed, not surveyed, but America's health rankings in 2021, to public health status, Indiana. Smoking, tobacco use, we're near the bottom, 45th, means we smoke a lot. Doesn't mean always. Being at the bottom is not good. Obesity, state, we ranked 46th in the country. Mental health, likewise, 43rd. Childhood immunizations, what we try to do is have all the recommended immunizations completed by the time the child is 35 months, we rank 41st in the country. And lastly, on that page, you see public health funding. Overall, Indiana ranks 45th compared to the other 50 states. So the governor presented Senate Bill Four. The legislature, our state senators, Senator Charbonneau, is chairman of the Health Committee, and he's jeopardizing this bill. And the current funding for public health in Indiana, per county, varies from $83 per person, Marion County, down to $1.25 per person, public health spending per person, $1.25. If you look at life expectancy, there is a third page in there, is life expectancy, and I'm sorry, it's hard to read. In Indiana, from the top county to the lowest county, our life expectancy varies by nine years. If you make it to 65, you're doing pretty well in Indiana. You gotta make it to 65. So we lose a lot with drug overdose. Calculate those people into the life expectancy, as you might guess, that's if they're overdosing at a young age, and that's 50, 60 years of life. So to improve these numbers, Governor Holcomb, like I say, brought forth Senate Bill Four, and the goals are to make funding consistent and equivalent across the state. The state knows that local government is not going to be able to contribute really anymore already. So the state is proposing to increase the Senate Bill Four, to increase funding, so that the state will continue their current contribution, the county, sorry, county will continue current contribution. It'll be 25% budget. State would be 75%. And this, this bill has not been signed yet. These can all be. Our local commissioners and council will have the opportunity to opt in or opt out. They can continue to keep public health funding just the way it is. Initially, it would be for two years. And there was gonna, the first year would not be the total funding, but the second year would be, and that will allow people like me to hire people and to get people who can manage kinds of funds. After the two years, the bill that I read says it would be five years, have five years of funding. Are they expecting to make this an unfunded mandate? They understand currency limits the funding for county health departments across. I said, this is to make funding reliable and predictable, so you can have some consistency. Health departments hire people, they know that they'll continue to have the funds to pay their salaries. And then the last handout is the second page, core services. If you're asking, well, what would the public health department do? Core services, this is really not new. This is, if you ask public health experts, what is it that core services include? As you can see, it's vital records. Everybody thinks of birth and death certificates, course, and so that's a vital, no pun intended, vital service. Communicable disease control, when we have outbreaks, when we have TB, we have people that their treatment for TB is supervised, monitored, to protect those that don't have TB. Immunizations, as you mentioned earlier, that continues. We are the immunizer of last resort. People are not getting their vaccine physician or provider than they get them from the health department. Infectious disease surveillance, this is monitor outbreaks. Mentioned TB control and case management. Monitoring and for safety of the tattoo, body piercing, eye life safety, so that these, we can guarantee that they're done safely. Access and linkage to clinical care, if a student doesn't have healthcare, then this helps to have a public health nurse or other people that don't have healthcare have some access in healthcare. Health-related emergencies, emergency preparedness, that's in the list. The second column, second half, chronic disease and injury prevention, trying to reduce smoking, prevent smoking, prevent vaping, which is very popular among our young, especially because it reduces the life, years of life, quality of life. Trauma injury prevention, this includes child infant safety, car seats. It includes also a statewide system, so if one of us, if someone's in a tragic accident out here on the highway, can they get to the trauma center within an hour? Maybe further, golden hour. Right now, we're not close enough to get people there within 60 minutes, even with a helicopter. Time you get the helicopter, we, if everything goes right, you might be able to be just a little over 60 minutes. We're trying to improve that by building, and they've already been working on it, so we have a trauma system. Screenings and referrals, this is for diabetes, the cancer, obesity. Environmental, public health, this is clean water, adequate septic control. Some areas are inspecting swimming pools, I don't know that we are doing that. I don't know who inspects West Central Pool. Maternal child and family health, fatality review, when you have an infant that passes away, child that passes away, this is a review committee that's currently in process that is inspect. Maternal and child health, since we don't have OB in our county, this is something that, one of my personal interests is to continue to do whatever can be done to promote the health of our mothers, pregnant mothers and newborns. School health liaison to help with infections there, head lice, including screening for vision, hearing and dental. And then lastly, lead management. Recently, they tightened up their controls, the values on blood lead tests for children because lead reduces IQ. Just lead your child, you'll have a reduced IQ. The state understands that public health is best when delivered locally, to, that is to quote Senator Brad Bennett, Republican from Richmond, Indiana. Public health is best when delivered locally. The state, to conclude here, the state would empower local health departments to support, with support on a district and regional level. So they're not here to replace us or to move the office out of the county. Another vital service that they would provide would be data collection. Once these things are done, then you have to show, did you spend the money? Did you actually do what you said you would? Those states, they are experts on data collection. And our goals would be every Hoosier has access to the same core public health services I just outlined. And overall, Hoosiers' health and life expectancy will improve. Businesses watching what we do, they want to go to states and localities that are helping. That's really all I have, and I'm happy to try to answer questions. Terry's not here, so technically.
I think earlier, I don't know how long ago that was, but I think you and Terry were here and presented the governor's public health commission. In order to establish this 25%, do we know an anticipated amount of money that's coming to the state? As we get close to budget time, that figure's gonna have to be known, and for us to say yes or no, that probably needs to be information needed.
Nailed down. Yes, I believe the state will have their budget forecast here another week. By the end of this month, the, I believe the depart, the budget department will have their forecast, what tax revenues will be. And then obviously, as you said, you'll need to know exactly, well, how much are we committed? What Plaski County committed? They've done the numbers at the state, and all, all the counties except two have the money to do this with existing money that they have, the counties.
Then, do you have any concern on staffing?
Oh, I do. That's gonna be the hardest part.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, every county in the state of Indiana is gonna be looking for expertise, competing with each other. I think, just like the hospital, one of the most successful things they've done, it's homegrown. They raise up local people, educate them, help them, and I think, to be honest, long term. Terry's been with the county health department for a lot of years. He's local, he's invested locally.
Because I guess that would be a concern, if they're gonna grade us on how well we accomplish this task, well, we can't find the people to accomplish it, is that a black mark for Plaski County?
Yes, that would be, you're right. And they understand that this is not just gonna automatic, January 1st, stand up this program with all these people. They understand, there's a phase in, they said, over the first two years is what they're expecting.
Do you want to have any other questions?
Well, like the, yeah, the trauma center, to be within that golden hour range, is there any suggestions or any plans as far as where we would, because a helicopter's fairly close, but where, where would we need to go?
There is a state trauma commission that's working in the public health, with public health department to answer that question.
Okay.
I think geography, a lot of it, just literally the distance.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So we'll plan to come back here when the bill is passed, to try to figure out what our next step would be.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, are you the spokesperson? Morning.
So I'm here on behalf of Plaski County Tribe. We are conducting what we're referring to as an exploratory project for the potential for an amphitheater in Plaski County. So our goal is to provide a community gathering and entertainment space for our current community members and for those who might visit Plaski County. Right now, we're focused on feasibility, requirements, expenses and partnership interest. So our role in the project, as we are hoping, would be project managers and facilitators. We are not looking for long-term own space, we feel that that is better suited for a county or a town body of governance. But our considerations at this time, like I had mentioned, include the accessibility, access to utilities, parking and restrooms, in addition to the interest of partnership in the project with PCTV and the coordinators of it, and seeking the required funding, labor, resources, materials, et cetera, for it. Our current phase is site scouting and town and county ordinance education. And so we come to you this morning, it's two-part. One would be to inquire if there is any locations that your body would recommend for us to explore or to consider. And then the second part is to send to you a couple of ideas, just off of looking at resources that we had available that might be potential opportunities to place such a structure. And again, I would like to emphasize the exploratory component of this, I don't have any hard numbers, a lot of it depends on the location that we end up taking at next level. Working contractors and writers to get a better picture of what this project would look like, and then coming back with facility guidelines, et cetera. I will pause any questions.
Are you looking for this to be in the town limits, or?
We have not put direct on the locale of it. We do prefer that it be in the county, just that being the size populace of the county. Outside of that, we are trying to look at it with an open perspective. We don't know what we don't know. There might be a great spot that we haven't even thought of yet.
How did you, a capacity that you're looking for?
Well, I would say around 1,000. If you look at some cost events within the city, I think that would be a reasonable number to start with. And again, it would depend on site size.
Well, I'd suggest, when they tear down those silos, to consider that spot.
That, on our shortlist, and we did speak with the town last week, that has to mean space, it can only be mowed, it's our understanding, it cannot be touched for any sort of project on it for a minimum of three years.
You've got restrooms, you've got parking, you've got, why is there a number standing out here?
Would like to contribute. And again, at this point in the project, we have partnerships and grants to fund the I do have a couple of locations that, just upon driving around the community, scouting them, that have come to mind. One of them that I'd like to present is the west side of the Winnemac Town Park area, there behind the library, society building was, and behind, it is our understanding that is county property. One of the reasons for that being a consideration of a spot is put significant efforts vitalizing and enhancing that area of the park, and it also has space as accommodations for all ages, have a good parking, have accessibility, structures and inputs to make it accessible, like will be accessible, restroom, et cetera. But that is a location, size of, envelope, opting. Other properties that we, in our preliminary exploring, Bronfield, absent, accommodate, requirements to make such a place accessible. And then the other component of working with you, if there are any differences, where have any, find set ordinances, educators.
Kevin, you want to address that?
Talk to the building department, talk to Carla, the unit, we have a unified development ordinance. But the town, you could be at the town of Winnemac, you have to talk to the town, they have their own zoning. So Justice Schramm might be able to help you, or just Kendra at the town office might have a copy of their zoning, they don't know.
And 90% of it is gonna be the same as the county's ordinance, we can get the town source, most of anything to the point that this hasn't changed in order since the town adopted it. Take a download right off the county website, most of the awards.
Do the commissioners have any concerns, actions they would like to consider? Project.
Just, they just to keep us updated on it as it goes through, we know we may have questions, then kind of a new topic to us, so.
What would we do to find out if either of these sites suggested are possible considerations? Buildings. Again, that is park area behind the library, society building, the wall seen out, and Bronfield, it has plenty of parking and space.
I think, as Kevin said, you'd probably start with Carla.
Both, with both of those being county, we'd have to get your permission, county property.
Right.
What do we do to get permission?
That's the AeroModelers, they're looking for, where we've got that lease with the Winnemac AeroModelers. So I mean, getting a copy of that lease, I'm probably reaching out to Winnemac AeroModelers and seeing if there's a way to cooperate with them to make use of some of the property while they're still using it for their airplanes, especially for jets over the heart thing, if there's a way there, that's probably a start.
My understanding, track, talk to Winnemac AeroModelers, kind of Winnemac, and get a green light from them, send it back to you, ask for permission. We need to come back to you, are we at permission today?
You'll need permission from the commissioners for, if you're in the town.
Even if it's county property. That area behind the library, according to, it's county property. That, that's why we're presenting that specific location to you, as are, right now, that is county property, as well as Bronfield.
I guess the answer is if you have a plan, and you actually have picked a spot, and you're looking for the county to either donate property or whatever for this purpose, then yeah, then you can come back to the commissioners, otherwise, the building department can assist you in determining what other steps you might need to take when we get permanent availability.
Correct, before we go to that, before we go down that path of having contractors get community, etc., 123, eyes, said spaces that we are, otherwise, it would be.
The one potential concern I have with the property by the park is that if, once the courthouse project is done, we're able to find new locations for health department and extension, put that building on the market, even though those are two distinct parcels, depending on who might want to purchase that for private repurposing, if they want some riverside access, we might want to have to look into splitting that parcel, doing some combinations and providing some access to it. And I don't know then if that would be enough room for what their project is, it's just kind of an uncertainty right now until we figure out what the long-term use for them. If, if it would remain in county ownership for whatever uses, for those two departments, other uses, probably wouldn't be a big deal. But if there is interest in the private sector taking it over in the future, that might be of interest.
Out though, I in the current, don't have that building, I'm driven access without major, as a.
Well, I'm talking about the main school building. I'm not sure that anybody would want to set up, that is, that's its own discussion within the county sometimes, whether we want to money into it, but if that property would be repurposed, I don't know if, it'd depend on who it is, what they might want to do for it and how long. Don't want to, you'd be in a position to start moving forward, and then the county's stuck with the building because nobody wants it without some excess ground.
Is there a flood zone concern with location number one?
We would have some service, and then tell us how far up we would need to raise.
Okay.
The lowest part, no, if you look at it from the perspective of here right now, and I don't have a great representation of this, it wouldn't flood where we're, flooding concern is.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
One other question, because I mean, you want to be partners with the county in the town, which makes sense, but would this ultimately entail giving, handing ownership over the, of the property over to the town, since the county doesn't have a car score, and somebody would have to take over responsibility for general maintenance and operations, which envision a not, a third party, not a trusted running it?
So I would anticipate in the place, talking about park and/or maybe, I don't, I'm not as, it will require some maintenance. There's also things such as this, church rentals, weddings, the market type events, like there's the opportunity, yes, there would be some grounds keeping maintenance. I would, town. So. I would anticipate in the place talking about park and or maybe. I, I don't, I'm not. It will require some maintenance. There's also. Things such as this, uh, church rentals, weddings. The market type events, like there's the opportunity. Yes, there would be some grounds keeping maintenance. I would. Town. Responsible.
We have no other questions. We'll just. You proceed and we'll proceed.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you very much.
We'll keep in touch.
Yeah, sure. There you go. I did not write on it, so.
You're lucky we didn't mark that up.
Yeah.
Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I brought, uh, we got Jeff Larsson and Chris Dyer that is our United Consulting, going to give. Presentation on our bridge inspection and. On a two-year contract and starting process. That was per NDOT. Two-year. Bridge inspection, starting a process over again for four years. Chris and Jeff, thank you for coming up from Indianapolis.
Morning. My name is Chris Dyer from United Consulting and I'd like to thank you for selecting us to partner with you on your bridge inventory. Now, I've been with United for sixteen years. I've spent my entire career doing design and inspection. I'm the project manager overseeing the Pulaski County Bridge Inventory and I'm here today to give you your final report and provide you with an update on the status of your bridge program. So in order to remain eligible for federal funds for your road and bridge improvement projects, the Federal Highway Administration requires that all of your bridges be inspected every two years. NDOT typically administers these contracts over a four-year period, um, broken into the two-year segments. We call phase one and phase two. Um, as Gary mentioned, NDOT has now started to use a two-year contract to kind of shift the workload and kind of balance it out over the four-year period. They had half of their counties were on the same start year. And so Pulaski County was one they chose to move to bump two years to offset that contract negotiation process across the state. So we're currently in a two-year contract and the county has, has just started the process of starting the next four-year contract that will start in twenty twenty-four. So this final report is based on our findings from our field inspections we completed in November of twenty-two. Uh, this inspection data was approved in February with the state and a copy of this report will be submitted to NDOT this morning to coincide with our presentation for their record. The binder includes the entirety of our findings, um, but the sheet you have in front of you kind of highlights some of the key points of the inventory to take away. Without digging into the details of each bridge. So on the front side. It lists the, the top five bridges we have on the priority schedule for replacement. Uh, we rank these bridges using a combination of factors, using the condition rating, the expected remaining life, safety of the traveling public, the traffic count. And the, the load capacity. So in addition to our engineering judgment, we also work with Gary to get the county's preferences and planning needs put into this report so that they're reflected as well when you go to program for getting bridges replaced. The full list of the bridges that are on the priority schedule is can be found on page eight. This just lists the top five. On the back of the sheet is a snapshot of how Pulaski County compares to statewide averages in various bridge-related categories. The noting that fifty percent of the county's bridges are fifty years old or older. And that there are less than ten percent posted for load capacity and less than two percent with a deficiency rating below fifty are signs that the county is working proactively to maintain the bridges they have. And strategically replace bridges when they're needed ahead of. Emergency repairs that are due to, due to deterioration as the bridges age. In addition to the summary sheet, uh, each binder has a flash drive in it. So on the flash drive is an interactive PDF report. So that's that entire book in one PDF that you can click between the tables in the front, the bridge reports, the photos, the map, all with a click of your mouse. You can see the entire book on your screen. In addition to the interactive report, it also included all of the inspection photos, individual reports for each bridge, all of the inspection data and a county map. If you'd like, after the meeting, I'd be happy to help you go through that and kind of give you a demo of how that works. Um, and if not, do you have any other questions?
That's a lot of information being thrown at you real quickly, but at the bottom of the two-page summary that you have, you have Chris's and my contact information. So you take some time to digest all that and feel free to get back to us if you have, you're looking at a particular bridge or just any question you have about that book or inspection process. Anything that we can do to help, uh, provide more detail or clarify anything, we'd be happy to do that for you. We're, we're available after the meeting or next week or whenever you need us, we come back up, phone call, email, whatever.
A couple of questions just because. Roughly, these top six bridges you highlighted, cost for replacement slash rehabilitation and are those costs anywhere, are they in line with what our typical annual budget is or out of bridge or highway generally, or is that going to be a cost burden beyond what normally happens?
That's a, that's a good question. It. One way to look at it is we try to spread these out, taking into consideration what the, the LPA, the county in this case has available for their budgets. We try to make a reasonable. Plan for our clients to approach it. Not sure exactly off the top of my head what the county's bridge budget is, but these, this list is, uh, what we feel is probably a reasonable approach to try to target. We'd have to look at the, uh.
Yeah, so.
In the book with the.
Yeah, so on, on page eight, we list the priority schedule that lists all the bridges. Um, we kind of list an anticipated year of work, kind of to give you an idea of how serious, how in need those bridges are of being replaced or repaired. Um. We do provide new cost estimates every time we do a report. We go back and look at current industry prices and come up with an estimate, put in this report that would kind of give you enough information to plan because a lot of these replacements are a year or two. Sometimes the bigger bridges could be a five-year plan. To get the federal funding set aside and get the county match and work through the federal design process, the environmental, the right-of-way, um, all the other processes that go along with getting the federal funds to do those jobs. So. The total, we have ten bridges on the list. The total estimated cost for replacement is approximately eleven million dollars. But those are spread out over the next ten years. And that's, we just kind of provide that list to you for planning purposes. If there's areas where you're getting some economic development or higher traffic counts where you need a better facility than what you have there, this kind of helps. We can re-prioritize this list to meet the county's needs. And take that into it.
Right. I guess that was my question for Gary, if he's even had time to look at this, ours prioritizing.
Well, and we basically worked through Jeff and Chris, Dave and myself, like which bridges is going to cause the major problem.
First.
Goes down and has to be closed. And talk with. That's what we prioritize. This one here is a major. Thoroughfare for traffic. So this, I let's pick this bridge and put it by and we're looking at doing it in community crossings. Costs us. Got one possibly making, we're in the works for next year.
Right. Your top priority bridge right now, we're looking at that closely, putting together some firm numbers for a project cost estimate. We take into consideration bus routes. Farmers routes, right? And we try to set the projects up so that they cause the least. The least amount of heartburn for the community, try to time the project so that they're done at a point in time when farmers aren't hauling all their grain, school buses aren't on the roads.
No, the state highway normally doesn't do that. They just close. They just close them. So. Okay, I don't, any other questions?
No other questions. Thanks. Jeff, thanks, Chris. Thanks.
I also have a book here at the highway. Instead of getting four books for everyone, I told them just get booked. The auditor, vice driving.
And on that note, these books are very well organized. Really good at, uh. Giving us the information.
Hey, Chris, Jeff, we thank you.
Thank you for, uh, giving us the opportunity to work with you. Always enjoyed it and look forward to keeping the relationship.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Chris and Jeff. United's been great to work with. Uh, no, I have some more questions and great companies.
Yeah, we certainly want to continue mutually, mutually beneficial relationships.
So, but I had, I had one other issue on the, uh, there for our mini excavator. Ours is currently, it's a two thousand eighteen and I just wanted to possibly talk to you about the okay to look at possibly upgrading, possibly the next size bigger while our mini excavator still has some value. I've not done any checking. I know there's two companies that do the source well. Company where you have to do. A bidding process if it's on the source well. Just wanted to ask if I could possibly look into. What might be the options out there to upgrade ours, like to say why it still has some value?
Yes, I'm sure being supportive, looking into it, made good decision ours.
Have some funding set aside in bridge. I don't, not checked on price of a brand new. But our used one. The longer we wait, the longer our used one. Well, we would like to go the next size bigger as still pull it with the trailer that we have. Our trailer is our tractor coming into the building. Can't get, I have a. Uh, arm or stick on it where we can still come to the garage door back in the back. Check next size bigger, it will still fit on the trailer.
When you normally, um, trade something like that, Gary, do you see what the trade-in value is and then try and see what you could sell it for outright or not?
Basically. I've not done that other than we had our old loader that we traded in, had great luck selling things on, uh, the gov deals. I think in this regards, if we go, depending on what company, I know right now it's at Ace on the source well. It would come down to those two who could give us the best price, new one. But our used one. I would say the case would probably give us a little bit more for our used one because it's ace. Yes, enough. If, if we had a cat, went to a cat. At the outlet. Probably go with ace. I don't, I've not checked. Wanted to get the okay from you guys.
Well, I know you've been selling stuff on the highway there and got some decent deals on a couple of things. Oh, I didn't know whether you did that or.
You done real well on the roller, sold it. It was surprising that much money. Yeah.
Um, sure do a good job of taking care of equipment so that that used equipment has combat.
Then on the last note. Just had a retirement party for one gentleman that left, had another gentleman that told me he was leaving. I got two more guys going to be gone by labor, five people short. Two's retiring, two much the better paying job. It's a concern. I can't keep my good health. That's tough. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Other business, we're down to the claims and payroll number eight.
Okay, so, um, yes, I have, uh, reviewed claims or looked at them and, uh, looked at payroll number eight. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on claims, payroll eight? Go in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the minutes of the April third meeting.
And I've, uh, reviewed those minutes and, uh, make a motion to approve as presented.
Any other discussion? Go in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, discussion items. Of the health screening. It, uh. Maybe I sent this to you, but I made a copy just in case. Uh, we talked about health screening with our insurance carrier and. Thought it'd be a good idea. So Jenny and Ken and I had a Zoom meeting with them and, earlier I think Maurice had mentioned, uh, he uses Hammond people. Um, Epic uses another party sometimes as well, health screenings. As you can see, Pulaski Memorial Hospital probably gave us, oh, the best deal on that. So we were going to proceed if this is something that we want to do, um, the health screening. Go to the next page of your. Handout. This is kind of what they are proposing as a timeframe. We make a decision today, April seventeenth to proceed with this. Then, uh. But have the desired screening dates by April twenty-eighth, which means. Screening events would probably start sometime in June prior to our, our next enrollment. As part of that discussion. We thought we had like between ninety and a hundred people, employees and, uh, said, well, the first time through, you're probably only going to get thirty percent. So those figures there are based on. Only thirty people participating. Apprehensive one is for thirty dollars and the basic is ten dollars. Also discussed. People could have their family screened as well, but it would be at their expense. You would just be covering our employees. So I think, uh. Maybe want to move forward on this today. I think there's one more page maybe in your handout. That is just, uh. That's just the, uh. Schedule of the screening, you know, the person's name at the top, the provider. And then if we go with the premium plan, thirty dollars, that's what it would cover. The blue one there, the basic or the top one's basic, that's your ten dollar. And those are just a couple of items that you would get. And the premium is a little more intense and the people would. And the premium is a little more intense, and the people would have to pay the extra if they want the flu shot, so on, but $20 for the flu shot, which might be cheaper if they went on their own. So I guess our discussion needs to be, number one, are we in favor of this screening process? Then, um, are we looking at the comprehensive as compared to basic? Well, first item first, is this something that they want to do?
Yes.
And then looking at the comparison of what's done bearing $30, $10, I think you have to look at two. If we detect something early, you're going to make up that, that amount of money pretty quick.
So we, I, I would certainly be in favor of going with the whole.
Apprehensive.
Apprehensive, yes.
So let's, let's put that in the form of a motion then, that we, uh, I would make the motion that goes Pulaski Memorial Hospital for health screening, and we would favor to use the comprehensive plan.
All right, we'll second that.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? And they would come and explain this, uh, to the people. Trying to create as much enrollment as possible. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have, uh, replanting. This is something that Larry brought to me. He had and, uh.
Okay.
And the three committee come and permission to plant trees on the west side of the Justice Center. And my comment to him at first was, well, I don't think we want anything too tall because then we get trash up on the roof, leaves and so on. So he sent back to me the trees that are 20 feet high, those that are 40 feet high. Chris, you might comment, want trees on that side of your building or not? On the west side of the Justice Center. He might have just took trees out. But they want to put trees back. Yeah. You want? Okay, so, uh, that will be our, cannot get a permit that we want trees put back in there at this time. Okay, so I will, uh, I will get back with Larry on, on that. Then this next item, our copier, the maintenance renewal, we did get a renewal. Laura met with the gentleman, the same business, same company that we have, these three or four copiers under at the present time, their contract ran out. But I think Laura and I feel that we'd like to have all the copiers under one company rather than two. So I think my suggestion here would be to table this at this time until we find what the cost would be from our current provider on all of our other equipment.
Great. We need that in form of motion. Okay, so I would make a motion to table the copier maintenance renewal. And we're tabling it because, uh, see if we can get them all under one
Right.
agreement.
Yes. I was actually in their proposal, the cost came down a little bit, but purchasing new. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And community comments today. Motion to adjourn.
Um, I make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned.